Welcome, everybody, to the November 6, 2024 special meeting. Please silence your cell phones and pagers and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. This time, we'll call the meeting to order, and I'd ask Ms. Commissioner Hancock to do the moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, I'd look for a motion to review and approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second. Moved by Roskinak, seconded by Lassiter. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is a time for a presentation for the best in public safety by... Excuse me. It's gonna be Mr. Mueller and Davis and Mr. Tom Grimmon. And at this time, this is the presentation, and I respectfully ask that we let you get through your presentation and have questions if we can at the end, if we can hold the questions till the end of the presentation.
Sounds good. Well, we appreciate your time this morning, and I know we only have an hour to do this. We do have some members of the public here, too, to watch. We did spend a fair amount of time going through a lot of these slides with the Commission at the last meeting when we had the initial discussion. We do want to spend a little bit of time discussing the slides again for the members of the public that were here that missed that initial presentation, but I do think it's important that we talk about the need to have future meetings that are more interactive with the public longer so we can spend the time we need to to go through the amount of details that we've gone through at the Commission. But I think with the fact we only have an hour today, it's gonna be important that we get through this presentation pretty quickly, so you have time to hear from Tom on the financial end of it and ask him all the questions you need to because we only have an hour set aside, if that makes sense.
Makes sense, Brian. Thank you.
All right.
So here we are. Some of the topics that we're gonna discuss again is obviously the population data in Pennington County, our jail statistics and data that the Sheriff's Office has provided, some of the design process that we're going through, the options, and then we'll get to the cost analysis again.
Again, oh, sorry. The population projection that we got from Elevate Rapid City, we discussed this with you last time. This has the history back from 2010 to present and then projects out to the year 2029. And then just a quick review that when we had Venture Architect working with us when we remodeled the kitchen and laundry to adequately be sized to handle an additional tower, we went through all of the infrastructure updates that we needed to do at the jail specific to plumbing, security electronics, and ground floor remodel. And at the time that they did this for us and provided us the numbers, it was a little over $28 million. We put that number in today's cost to be about $36 million. And again, that would be just to fix the upgrades that need to be done infrastructure-wise at the main jail, not with adding any jail bed capacity that we're gonna talk about here in a minute.
And one other thing, everything that's on, essentially everything that's in this proposal is included in any option going forward, so.
And then again, just a quick review, that there's a lot of factors that go into the impact and the numbers of the county jail, and I just listed there those, a list, and that's not a completely comprehensive list, that's just many of the things that go into determining how many people were housing locally in the jail each day. And a lot of people have the belief that it's really driven by law enforcement, but I'd tell you, the other factors on that list as far as how long people are staying in custody, what the bond schedule looks like, are outside the control of law enforcement, and there's a lot of factors at play. There's a lot going on in this graph again, and this is a little bit different than the graph that we presented to you last time. We spent a little bit more time talking through different scenarios. If we were to open additional housing units, what that would look like, looking at our trend line. You can see that bottom trend line is our, the yellow is the U.S. Marshal trend line. You can see how that's risen up, hit its peak in 2020 and 2021, and we've had to reduce that systematically over the last several years based on our increase of local jail population, which is the purple on this graph. And as you can see, after the drop we had in COVID, we've been on a pretty steady incline with the local jail population. The green line on there again is our operational capacity, which is, we've shown to be 87%. And the red line on there is capacity at 100% full. And when you go back to that graph at the beginning on the left, that starts in 2004 before we built the annex in 2006, and then it layers in each floor of the annex that we opened. So you'll see as the capacity steps up, one, two, three times there, that's opening the fourth floor, third floor, second floor of the jail annex. And then again, the operational capacity has increased with each step of that. So you can see from this, from the graphs here, that the Pennington County population, the population we've housed at the jail, has been at or above capacity, you know, going clear back to 2004 when we had to do the expansion. And just a reminder, when we did the expansion on the, in 2006, we did build that full facility out, but we shelled in the top two floors and did come back and finish those out as we needed to, or maybe it was the bottom two floors, I guess. And we did finish those out as we needed the additional capacity, and that's part of one of the options that we're gonna talk about to you today. And then, this is just a breakdown, a little bit closer look at the same graph that we had before, just to give you a little bit more detail. It's easier to see, it's not quite as busy. This is the last 20 years, and then the next graph depicts what we think the projections will be for the next 20 years. The first four years in the light blue would be if we made a decision here in the next few months as to what we were gonna do, that's gonna be the time that it would take roughly for construction. And then when the dark blue lines start, that's what we're estimating the population of the jail to be. And we, there are some factors that are within our control, the U.S. Marshal numbers is one of those. And as our local numbers continue to trend up, the numbers that we're gonna share with you today, we're running 108 U.S. Marshals in custody today. I believe by the time we get the, whatever expansion floors opened up after construction, that we're gonna probably be closer to the number of 50. It might be tough to even maintain 50. So with each 50 marshals that we lose, we're losing about $2 million in revenue. And again, this is just showing the last 10 years of history of marshal inmates and marshal revenue. The blue are the number of inmates we've housed. You can see we've had to reduce that since 2021. And the red line on there, orange line, is the revenue that we've received from the marshals. And I'll just remind you again, the drop between '23 and '24, but the rise in revenue is because we renegotiated our rate from $85 a day to $112 a day. This is just a graph that shows intakes by year. You can see we're on a steady increase. It dropped off after COVID, and again, that's continued to increase. This is length of stay, which is really driven by case processing with the attorneys and the courts. And again, that's a number that we've seen continue to increase in Pennington County. On the last presentation, I listed out some things that we were doing for jail diversion and alternatives. In this presentation, we've actually included some numbers. I just went back and pulled 2023 numbers, so you can see on the 24/7 program, we had 853 individuals on that in 2023, and sentenced individuals, we had 53. So there's a number of individuals a day that are reporting to 24/7. The care campus is diverting about 1,000 low-level offenders a year. Most of those are from the Rapid City Police Department. The State's Attorney, Retsel, provided me with some numbers that they had in 2023 for their diversion programs. 86 adults were assisted, 53 successful completions, and then they had 22 specialty court graduations in 2023. And those people without specialty court would be likely either in jail or in prison. Thank you. And then electronic monitoring, this is a number that we often forget about, that we're monitoring at the jail, but they're not in custody. So we're running close to six and a half individuals that are sentenced a day on electronic monitoring and 47 a day in 2023. And we've talked at length about the Sheriff's Ignite Work Program that's ramping up, and I just show you this number to say, I think we're doing all we can do to divert the people that we can house alternatively or have other alternatives to in Pennington County. So when I go look at that jail population to try to come up with another group of people to release out on an alternative, I think we have the right people in custody at the right time right now. All of our system players have worked really closely together to ensure that the last couple of years, so I just don't feel like there's another layer of individuals that we can safely remove out of that jail and put on the street. So that's part of the urgency of where we're at today with this jail project. This is just a quick review of alternative site options that we explored. We did work with the city of Rapid City, we worked with the state of South Dakota. Vicki Fisher over at Planning really recommended into the short and long-term plans for Rapid City only three real locations that she felt that a new jail addition would fit. We heavily explored co-locating on the state facility so we could build a one-level construction either on Creek Drive or near their women's prison. We, the legislature voted the Creek Drive acquisition of property down last year or two years ago, and we looked at several empty facilities in town to see if we could remodel them. And really, all of our, all of our data pointed to the best location to build this jail operationally for Pennington County and for short and long-term planning for Rapid City was right here on our local campus.
Okay, I'm gonna go through sort of our design process so far and where we're at. I know this might be repetitive from what I said last time, but for the sake of the public understanding what's going on and where we're at, go through it briefly here. Typical project, this is what you see. You have your architect, your MEP engineers, your structural engineer in civil. We've also hired, Skoll is our construction manager at risk. They really give great market value input on costs and constructibility of the project itself. We have design assist partners in Action Mechanical and Muth that are paramount in making sure the actual equipment that we're putting in the building lines up with what, you know, Skyline is proposing. And we also have our security, electronics, and detention equipment, design assist partners, and then as well as a commissioning agent in tune. And again, commissioning agent is probably not very clear for most people, but what they do is they help ensure that everything runs smoothly, whether that's equipment or any sort of operational aspect of the correctional facility itself. So this is the construction site aerial view here. You can see it's right in line there with the original jail and jail annex. It is a tight construction site to work with, but again, for operational aspects, it makes the most sense to have it in this location. Here's what Option A looks like. And what's included here is 148-bed housing floor. There is a mechanical, electrical, and security floor, which is basically the floor that houses the energy plant, if for lack of better words, to operate this entire facility. You also have a completed vehicle Sallyport at three, and then four is the first floor main jail remodel, including infrastructure. Again, that's where a lot of the sanitary sewer pipe is gonna be replaced and some other items will be addressed in there. You have your base cost. Skoll did break out alternates one and two, though both of these alternates should be included in any option moving forward. Alternate one is the existing jail and jail annex security electronic upgrade. So that's the original jail here, as well as the jail annex back here. And what that upgrade does is it takes us on to a new security electronic system, as the one we have now is proprietary and very hard to work with and very hard to maintain at the moment.
And I would, I would just add that a little bit later on in this presentation, we did add operational costs, so all of the staffing, the food, the medical, the supplies for each floor that we add on. And in the costs for the control room specifically for staffing, I didn't break all the staffing costs down, I can get that to you for each layer of that, but that was all based on doing the security electronics upgrade. If we do not do the security electronics upgrade and we move in to happen to operate two completely separate security electronic systems when we do the annex, it's gonna require additional staff and additional area in that, in that control room, because we'll be running two totally separate systems. We will not be able to do that with the same amount of people and efficiency as if we convert over to one system, if that makes sense.
And then alternate two is the lower-level main jail remodel for intake center and healthcare. What this does is currently booking is located in a different area on this ground level, and to make the Sallyport work here for that intake and booking, it makes sense to, we'd have to basically remodel and restructure this entire ground-level floor. And then you have your base cost there with alternates one and two for Option A. Here's Option B, and it includes everything Option A does, except it has a second 148-bed housing floor, bringing the total for this construction here to 296 beds in totality. Again, everything else is the same. And Option C. So we have a couple options here for C, broke down as C1 and C2. What C1 is, is everything Option B includes, but it's shelling in third and fourth floor here for future expansion. So these two floors would be vacant, there would not be beds in there, they would just be shelled out floors for expansion. And the total base cost with alternates one and two for this option for shelling in two floors, or the additional two floors, is $129 million. Option C2 is, again, everything Option C1 gives you, but it builds out the third floor with another 148 beds roughly, and then another 148 beds for level four. So again, these alternates are all broken down. You know, Skoll kinda created an à la carte menu for us to, you know, to put it in perspective here, and so, I mean, there's, there's an opportunity where if you wanted to just expand to, or if you wanted to have three built-out floors and shell in one, that's certainly doable. Again, we have many options here. And then the total base cost for this, for C2, is $168 million. Again, just to go over the alternates real quick, alternate one and two are essential for operations regardless of the option selected, because alternate two basically makes the Sallyport work operationally, and then alternate one is the security electronic upgrade that I touched on and the sheriff as well. And then alternate three and four are to add 148 beds per floor.
And I just wanted to mention, it's not in the presentation, but there is, there's a possibility, there's what's called a COPS Technology Grant that's out there. You have to be actually invited to apply for this grant by a congressional delegate. We've been working with our, with Senator Rounds to get an invitation to apply for that, and I'm hopeful that we would be eligible potentially for the full cost of the security electronics upgrade with that grant. So as we get more information here in the near future, I'll share that with you also. But we are exploring other options to try to solve some of the financial issues that this project's gonna create for Pennington County.
Here's a breakdown of some cost-per-bed comparisons. If you look at Option A, this, this total here takes out any A&E and design fees, we're just talking about the construction of the tower itself. It adds, Option A adds 148 beds, your cost is $414,000 per bed. Option B gets you 296 beds, roughly $294,000 per bed. Option C, 296 beds, again, this is the same as Option B, but these two, there's two levels shelled in above for future expansion. This is $349,000 per bed, and then Option C2, excuse me, is the full jail, complete jail with 592 beds. And you can see, obviously, the more, it is a huge financial impact to begin with, but constructing an entire, the entire building at once drives your cost per bed down significantly. Some project comparisons, this is a new updated number here from Andy Skoll. It's roughly $77 million project for the South Dakota Women's Prison. They have 288 beds, and that estimate there brings it to $265,000 per bed. And then the Men's State Penitentiary, they have $567 million budgeted for this project, 1,500 beds in total, $378,000 per bed. Okay. We'll come back to these slides, these are the ones that Tom is gonna go over. We're gonna go over some of the operational things here, and we will come back to that. So these are some annual utility operational costs I put together. What I did is I took our utility reports from our existing jail and jail annex, and it's not one for one, but what I did is tried to do some comparisons there. I also made sure to add the inflationary increases to align with 2028, 2029 costs, because water, for city water right now, it's a 10% increase over the next, excuse me, it's 10% increase annually over the next five years, as well as some, the natural gas also has a 4.9% inflationary rate to it, and then energy, I just tacked on a 5% increase over time. So you can see here with Option B, I didn't break it down for every option, so it wasn't confusing, but basically I made an option where it's 50% occupancy, so that would be two built-out floors. And you can see the total there is roughly $313,000 for those annual utility costs. Option C2, which would be your total complete jail, and this is if it's 100% occupied, you're roughly sitting at $626,000 annually. Again, this jail's a little different, what we're designing is a little different than what we have. Our new jail tower is, has a shower in every cell, whereas the one, the jail and the jail annex do not have that, so the water could go up a little bit more than what we're used to seeing. And the energy costs provided are from Skyline. They did a, an energy report for us, and then again, I tacked some increases and put it at the high end for those costs.
This was Sheriff's Office operational cost per floor, and it's cumulative. So Option A, and I'd tell you, the staffing levels, depending on which floor that we're opening up, depending on, are running anywhere from about 35 staff down to 21 staff as we get higher up, because we have to add some initial staff and supervision when we add the transitional housing, which is Option A. So staffing is about $2.5 million for Option A, and then food, medical, supplies, about $400,000 total there, so you can see $2.9 million roughly total for Option A. If we do Option B, we're gonna be at about $5.9 million. Option C with alternate three at about $8.1 million, and Option C2, which is finishing everything out, would be a little over $10 million. And just wanted to talk a little bit about potential return on investment, and obviously, none of this is set in stone, because there's a lot of factors that factor into marshal inmates, how we house them. But as you know, operationally in the jail, for the last few years anyways, we've been, we've been running about 46% of our operational costs covered by outside revenue, Sheriff's Office-wide, and a big part of that is our jail revenue that we get. As I showed you before, before, between now and the time we get even one floor opened up, we're gonna have to reduce that marshal number down, probably an additional 50 from where we are, so we're gonna have lost roughly $2 million of revenue before we even get started. I figured for easy math, layering in about 25 marshals per floor if we open them back up, that could be a little bit less, it could be a little bit more. Part of that is dependent on availability of marshal inmates, so if the federal courts change gears, sometimes they're short a judge, sometimes they're really efficient, so that impacts the numbers of federal marshals that are in the region. But I do believe that a conservative number would be to add roughly 25 per floor. We could initially add a little bit more if we can keep our local population at a little bit slower growth rate. So that'd be about $1 million a year of additional revenue per floor that we opened up. And then I put the Fall River in there. I know it's, it's too early to project that that would be, come to fruition, but as you know, they've been working on the possibility of adding jail bed space or building a facility down in Fall River County. And I do think that it would be worth going down and visiting with Fall River and Custer County and partnering together with us to cover some of the costs, on the bonding costs on the front end of this. But if Fall River were to choose us for an option, a couple of years ago when I was down there, they were running roughly 25 to 35 inmates a day in custody. I did this math just based on if they had 25 inmates and they wanted to partner together with us, we could potentially pick up another $1 million a year in revenue by partnering together with Fall River, which might be a really good option for them. I don't know what all they've looked at for options, but I do think it's worth sitting down and having a discussion, so I just put that in here for discussion purposes today. Haven't had any detailed conversations. I've not talked to any commissioners. I briefly talked to the sheriff about wanting to bring a couple of commissioners down there in the near future and have that conversation, so I just put that in there as a footnote as a possibility. But I would tell you that I do, I feel strongly that if we do nothing, and we let this run its course here for a little bit longer, but the only really relief valve that I have is to continue to kick out U.S. Marshal inmates, and I feel strongly within the near future, I don't know if that's five, six years from now, we're likely gonna be down closer to zero U.S. Marshal inmates, you know, at the cost of a little over $4 million of revenue that we're generating off of that now, plus we're still gonna need to build without that, without that revenue. And once we lose those numbers, it's gonna be hard to bring those back, because I do know Lawrence County is getting ready to open their new facility, they're gonna house some U.S. Marshal inmates up there, 30 to 40. And I do think that if we don't continue to have the ability to maintain some U.S. Marshal inmates to offset some revenue, that that could be something that's potentially lost for the future for us.
These are just some pros and cons. I can briefly go over these. I don't wanna spend a lot of time, we're already almost a half hour in. But, you know, Option A obviously is the lowest initial cost. You get immediate space relief, even if it's minimal. The cons here are substantial cost for expansion, limited capacity for growth, certainly increase wear in existing facilities. Keep in mind to, to be able to repair the existing infrastructure repairs, or I guess, to repair the infrastructure in the original jail, we need to try to, if we can, move some inmates over hopefully into a new facility, into the new facility, so we can go in and fix the infrastructure in the main jail. Otherwise, it's gonna cost significantly more if we don't vacate some of that area. It'll drive construction costs up, and it'll also bring the timeline way out to get those necessary repairs done. And then obviously, the reduced capacity for U.S. Marshal inmates there. Option B, obviously, it's a, it's still a big cost, it options, offers more capacity than Option A, you get improved bed capacity, and then flexibility for future expansion, potentially building on top. Still very costly future expansion if you don't shell in the additional floors. There's operational disruptions and safety concerns by tearing off a roof where there is inmate population below, and then limited long-term planning, and then there is an increase there for U.S. Capacity, or sorry, for U.S. Marshal inmate capacity, but limited future capacity, but limited future growth. And then options C1 and C2, the con here is the biggest one, or the cons for highest initial costs, I mean, that's, it's substantial, right? We all know that, and that is a huge con. And, and there could be a delayed return on investment for the shelled floors for option C1, depending on when you actually build those out. But again, you can read off some of the pros. They're, they're fairly similar to option B, but you avoid future inflation costs and construction costs mainly, so.
Yep, and I think we covered this in the last presentation, but again, wanting to go visit with Rapid City about potentially cost sharing, some of the, the construction costs, and then Fall River and Custer County also.
So we're going to hop back to these slides, and we'll let Tom Grimmon come up, just to go over something briefly here. This is the base cost, so this is your construction cost with all A and E and design fees included for this option. And then what I did is I broke it down for the amount that we'd have to bond for, and then the payment and the impact on the tax levy, and then I also gave an example, but I'm going to let Tom go over some of this, so.
Sure. Tom Grimmon from Collier Securities. Worked on a number of your guys' financings in the past, and worked with Cindy and Julie in the past. Just to cut to the chase, all of these, and I think you mentioned this, that all of these have a cash component of the $37, $37 million that brings down the base cost, and that's how we figure out what our bonding amount was for. So that's what you have there. You see the base cost, $85 million, basically $86 million, and the amount to bond is $48,808. We figured all these on 30-year, 30-year bond payments, so your annual payment is almost $3 million on that first one, which, given where your valuation is going to be for 24, pay 25, it's going to be about 19 cents per thousand, or 18.9 cents per thousand. So on a $300,000 piece of property, that's about a $57 per year increase. We broke it down per month, because if you own a house and you're in, you know, you're someone paying taxes, a lot of people have a budget, and it does show it lower, but if you're budgeting on a monthly basis, you can kind of see what that increases on your budget and how that would affect your budget. We also have some ag numbers that we'll get to. So option B, pretty much the same scenario. You get your base cost, your cash comes out of 37 million, and then we end up with a bond payment or a bonding amount of 75, almost 76 million, and a 30-year bond payment of about 4.6 million. That impacts you at about 29 cents, 29.2 cents per thousand, and then that's about $88 per year on a $300,000 piece of property, and at $7.33 per thousand. Let me go to the next slide. And then we have our option, option C, you can see similar situation, C1 and C2, let's cover them both at $300,000 down at the bottom. It's 800, or $108 per year, about $9 per month increase. Or the option C2, you're looking at about $152 increase on $300,000, and your amount is $12.66 per month. I'd like to point out from each of these options, now that they're out there, is that what you want to look at is your, if you have your tax statement, everybody got their tax statement back in, back by March of last year, so you could contest it for 24, pay 25, so that's what this is based on. So those, those cards or notes that came out from the county, those are the numbers you want to use when you're figuring your taxes. You look at the impact number here, let's just say option C1, you've got 35.8 cents per thousand, so basically you divide your, your tax, your property valuation by 1,000 and multiply it by 35.8 cents, or .358. All right? Ag land, we, you do have about a million acres of ag land. I know some ag land obviously is, is, is better than other ag land, but whenever I do these presentations, there's always somebody that wants to know, well, what's the impact per acre? So I, I give that number, even though I know some of them, some have better land and some have land that's not as good. But just taking the number of acres, the valuation basically that's out there on that ag land, and we have, you know, for option A, it impacts you about seven cents per acre. You know, option B's 11 cents per acre, option C, 14 cents per acre, and option C, about 20 cents per acre. Now, I don't know, you know, from that information, I don't know what the average owner of ag land is. I, I do remember a long time ago, I visited New Underwood School District, and, and someone was nice enough to, and I mean that tongue-in-cheek, explained to me that unlike the east side of the state, I'm from Sioux Falls, you guys in ag land have thousands of acres, so it does have an impact on ag land. It's not, you know, a section of land. So I didn't put sections up there. I didn't want to insult anybody. I know how things run out here for ranchland, so we just, I just put an acre per, per acre. But if you want some other kind of analysis, I can definitely put it together for you. This just kind of starts the ball rolling. So this was the, how they, how we came to those bonding amounts, amount to bond for, line there, three down, after you took the total jail cost and then figured in the cash, and then we ended up with the bond payment, and then the total tax levy impact. So it's kind of a shortcut sheet to look at this. One thing that we didn't cover on this, and kind of springing it on Davis this morning, is we don't have a slide for type of financing. I don't know if that's been discussed. Counties basically have two types of ways to finance, and that's through a lease purchase. That's how we've done most of, well, I'd say all of your financing over the last 25 years that I've been doing it for you. That's a lease purchase. We do it underneath your 90 cents per, 90 cents per thousand building fund levy. The other way you can do it is through a general obligation bond, and that requires an election upfront. The other projects you've done have been under the building fund levy, the existing levy you have that you can grow at 3%, or CPI, whatever's less annually. So those have all been done under that. So there's never been a referral process there, but if you did something like this and you were under the 90 cents per thousand, that would, that, that would allow for a referral, a reverse referendum, so they could refer it if you proceeded and did it the way you've done all your others. Again, I don't know if I made that clear. When we did the other ones, because they were under the levy, the existing levy, there was no raising of taxes. It was under the existing level, levy, that didn't open it up to a referral. This one would, because it would be on top of what your existing levy is. Whether it be a geo, that would be a referral though, if you did a lease purchase. If you went right out and did a general obligation bond, that would be, you know, that would go right to a vote. And, and just some timelines, I'm not sure, Cindy's not here, I didn't ask her what kind of prep time. Normally it's about 35 days, but if you're going to use the machines, the guys like to, you know, get the ballots done, so I usually, if you're using machines, I say 60 days, just kind of rule of thumb for if you're going to do an election.
So that's all the slides from the presentation, and now we will stand for any questions.
So Davis, let me just understand on the mechanical floor.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't make any difference if you, if you build one floor, or if you shell out all the above floors. The mechanical floor is always going to remain as the number two floor?
Most likely, yes. This, I mean, potentially you could change layout, but what we're, what we're trying to design is a building to reach the full capacity at some point, and therefore the mechanical level makes the most sense, because you're going to need that amount of equipment that, it won't take up every square foot in there, but it'll take up the majority of it to operate that entire facility, as well as there are some HVAC units that will be in that mechanical floor that serve the main jail as part of that infrastructure remodel.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Laster.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, because I did look at the future cost comparisons and the Pennington County cost per bed. As, as I understand this, because there's two different numbers there, but really what you did is you took the cost of floor one, three, and four in each of those scenarios, and that's how you came up with the cost of the bed, that you didn't add all the other stuff like the Sally Port, the alternatives, even though that would still be wrapped up in the total cost?
Correct. When you're talking about, I know it might not make a lot of sense, but when you're talking about the cost per bed, you try to limit it to the actual construction of the facility and how many beds are going into it. Even though the Sally Port is essential for the operations of that building, it's not really, that's not really driving the cost per bed up. The cost per bed is just based on how many beds in that facility and the constructability of that aspect, rather than adding, because I'm not going to add the jail remodel for $15 million, which is the booking floor into the cost per bed, because we're not creating any bed space. Does that make sense? That's the only reason those items are not included in that total.
Gotcha. And follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
All the infrastructure repair that needs to happen, the sewer and all that kind of stuff, how's that wrapped up in this?
Yeah, that is, it is in the base cost of any option.
Of any option?
So it's in, yeah, in each option here, in this base cost includes the infrastructure repairs in the main jail.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I, I think Brian was trying to point out how important that revenue is coming from the marshal service, and if we don't get that income, then it's just going to be an added burden to the taxpayers. And an example would be in 2021, we generated, if this chart's correct, 6.1 million dollars that offset our utility cost and all other operational costs. If we go to option B and C1, the estimated expenses for that, that would be food, medical supplies, 5,900,000, and then we take our utilities at 313 for 296 beds, 440, that comes out to 6,213,000. So if we have that revenue from 2021, and we could move it over to B and C1, that marshal service would basically, the income from that would basically pay the operational cost of the jail, if I understand it right.
Correct, it comes pretty close.
And another, when we did that kitchen remodel a few years ago, it's my understanding that the capacity of the kitchen would accommodate another four, five, 600 beds, so we wouldn't have to really focus on that part of the infrastructure.
Correct. We may need to add some additional storage, but the actual equipment in the kitchen and the equipment in the laundry is sized to be able to handle the additional bed space.
And another thing, going back, I think, three years, we, the Building Committee, we brought on BK to assess the county needs, not only the county administration building, but the jail, and at that time, it's my understanding that just to repair the existing tower was $30 million, the aging and failing infrastructure. So, I mean, this has been going on for three years, if I, I think it's been going on for three years, and that needs assessment three years ago said we're 600 beds short in 50 years out.
I can, just from my personal experience, I can tell you that when Sheriff Holloway was here, and that's been almost 14 years ago now, we were working on trying to figure out how to solve the infrastructure issues, and at the time, we were worried that the main sewer lines were going to collapse, making, you know, 300 beds unusable for us, and that, that's still a possibility today. I know buildings and grounds, we've had some pretty major breakages over the last few years, and they've really kept us limping along, so not going back and fixing that infrastructure is not really an option for us. We're really going to, we could wind up in a day trying to outsource a few hundred inmates, and the cost of that is going to be astronomical.
And when you look at cost per bed, you know, the women's prison that's being built in East Rapid City, they're building that on a piece of land, and it's going to be an empty building, they're starting from scratch. It's a lot more challenging trying to add on to the existing facility when it's in operation, you got to handle the inmates that are in that facility.
Yeah, it is a very restricted space for construction, and again, if we're just talking about constructability, that's why when you look at options, mainly C1, when you shell the entire building, and it makes the most sense, because to get that mobilization and have construction set back up to maybe add additional floors, if you just choose option B, it's going to be a huge expense at the end of the day to do that in such a tight space, so.
Thank you.
Chair.
Ms. Hattuck.
So a couple of things. I've been here about 10 years, and we needed infrastructure, and you're right, in the jail 10 years ago. I've been for the jail and redoing the jail for the whole time I've been here. The problem with me is we did increase in wages of 16 million in the last three or four years. We did building increases about 30 million. It's about $46 million impact already on the citizens and their taxes. So for me, I think we should have thought ahead, just a little bit more, and I'll keep saying, I think the jail should have been first. Not this building, not the new administration building, or even the building across the street. And now we have an impact to the citizens that's astronomical, because then you've added 128 million with 170, or 46, $174 million increase in three to four years on the taxpayers. That's a lot of money. I want to do the jail. I think it's a need for the jail, but I also been looking at some statistics and some things on your graphs. The graph from 2004 to 2044 is an 800 total increase of inmates that you want. You started with 300 in 2004, and now 2044, you'd like 1,100.
Could I clarify?
Go ahead, sir.
I don't want any of these inmates.
Right.
And I'm just telling you what I think is going to happen, in that if you go back to the slide that talks through all the factors that determine how many inmates your county jail's housing, I have very little to do with that. I do have say in how many US Marshal inmates that we're holding, and what I'm telling you is I think that our, the trends that we're on, and the other thing I, that I would, I forgot to mention is, I haven't factored population growth into our trend line yet. I mean, that's going to have an impact on, on this too, so I think the, I think the trend line that's on there is conservative. And if we, if I could figure out a better way to do things, or our, our criminal justice group could figure out a better way to do things to lessen that, we'll do it. We're going to, we'll continue to look at that, no matter what, what piece of this we decide to do or not do moving forward, we're going to continue to work together to make sure we have the right people in those jail beds. But what I'm telling you as sheriff is, there's not a lot, there's not many other layers to the onion here that we can peel off safely and put these people back into the community. And I do think there's some things we could do with case processing and other things that can, that can lessen that, that slope on that graph, but we're not going to make it go away.
Thank you. So in 2004 to 2014, you were 150 increase. 2014 to 24, 150 increase, same. Then when we came to 24, you increased it 200 in 10 years, and then another 300 in the next 10 years. So you increased it, based on your trend, it's about 150 every 10 years. You put the 150 for the 10 years, and then you doubled it on the next. The increase in the population right now is about 4,000 people, so based on your trend, I guess it didn't make sense to me. Number two, they're building a new prison for 1,500 inmates. Do you know in Rapid City, we'll have then 1,100 inmates, plus a 288. We'll have 1,388 inmates in a population of 170, or 117, maybe, let's say 150, if you want to increase it. We're a tourism industry, and we're going to have 1,100 inmates in the middle of Rapid City. State prison is usually not in the middle of Rapid City. That's a concern for me of increasing that much and what the trend's supposed to be. And based on those trends, we supposedly, supposedly, we've had tons of programs, tons and tons of programs, and the trend hasn't went down. It's going up. So that concerns me. The impact of adding the more FTEs, the extra costs of 2.9, 5.9, 8 million, 10 million to our budgets, we were 6 million over our budget this year because we had increase in wages and budgets that weren't turned back, because they were spent in the last three years on those increases. Now, am I correct, both of these bonds, the lease purchase and the other one, are both referred?
Yes, they would be, they would, one would. Yes, they would be, they would, one would, the, the geo-bonds, general obligation bond, would be of an election right out of the start.
That's the least one?
No, that's the general obligation bond. And then if you did a lease purchase, the, the, the power is given to the commission to, um, to move forward with that, and you would need four of the five commissioners move forward with that, and then that would become referable. That one's referable.
Okay.
So there's two different ways to do it.
So one, it'd be an automatic election, the other would be?
Correct.
Referable.
Correct.
So.
Clear clarification on that, if you don't mind, since he's here? How much is that first one? That's an automatic referral. How much is that bond?
I'm sorry. What?
You said the automatic, the automatic referral?
Right. It's, well, it's like a regular referral. So five, I think it's 5% of the electorate, is that what you're asking? Would have to circulate a petition and get it signed and then turned in within 20 days.
But how much would that bond be?
Well, it, it depends on which project.
Oh, okay, it's based on the property.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood what you were saying, and that's why I was asking.
And, and I guess I, I might add too, that, um, within your building fund, you have to be within the 90 cents. So if you did pick option C2, you would, you would most, you would most likely, again, Cindy's not here, but most likely have to have a geo-bond because that would put you above your 90 cents per thousand. So if that was the option that the, the commission proceeded with, that would, that would limit you to just a general obligation bond issue. The other three issues, the amount of the impact is under what the existing debt service is in the building fund, the existing levy and the, like this, this other one here is like 36 cents, I think it's 44 cents right now, so if you add those two together, it's less than 90 cents per thousand, which is your limit within the building fund. General obligation bond is above and beyond. That sets up a separate debt service fund, a bond redemption fund, and that's separate on top of, um, everything else you have. All right?
Thank you, sir. So bottom line is, how much do we want to impact the citizens and how much do you think on a referral that this is going to pass? I want the jail done. I'll just tell you up straight, and you knew that a long time ago, um, Brian. How do we get it done without making that big an impact to the citizens is where we need to look. Um, I'm not ready to, uh, do a $7 million, adding, uh, 5 million, I should say, total of 7 million to a, to a, um, design when, I think it's up to the citizens if we move forward and how we move forward. Because I think, this is my opinion, I think you're going to kill a jail with this kind of numbers unless we figure out before we decide to do referrals or bonding where we show the citizens that we've raised more money and where those impacts are a lot more. Number two, spending 7 million on a design project is enough probably to throw most people over the edge on it. Um, number three, um, most people are having issues already with their taxes, their property taxes, and they've, they've told you over and over again on this board, and we said, how do you increase property taxes? You increase budgets. We're increasing the budget phenomenally. So bottom line is, Brian, I'm with you that we need to redo something with this jail and we've had for a while on infrastructure. How much do we need and how much do we want? And how much do we actually have to work on for the future at those kind of numbers and those increases? Is there not going to be anything in the future that's going to decrease inmates? Um, you can't tell the future, I get it. But I'll keep saying, people are telling me everywhere I go, I don't care if they have a dollar or a million, the impact on property taxes and what Pennington County said was too little, not too high, not too low, but just right? I don't think the citizens thought that was right. $6 million increase, just one entity out of schools, counties and cities is huge. Now we're saying, we're going to do it again. We want the safety, we want the, the things that law enforcement and our first responders do, I'm with y'all, but, um, what's that impact to our citizens? And we're, how much are we willing to spend so they can survive this inflationary times? So, um, again, how do we move forward? I'd say we need to see how much money we can raise or how much money we can work with other counties, the state, and see how we bring those numbers down. Um, and maybe it brings some of their numbers down, uh, for what we want to do for the future. And, uh, again, one more thing, downtown, uh, Innovation District, the downtown people that are in those, uh, committees, I don't know if they're real happy, and I think we need to visit with them, increasing, um, inmate population in our jail when they're trying to make a downtown district and an innovation area and have people come in and actually want to do businesses stuff in an area that we are increasing inmates on, so. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Uh, thank you for the presentation. I'm going to save my comments because later on on the, the agenda, we do have a proposal for some more discussion. I'll save my comments for that, that time. But I, uh, thank you very much for giving this report and presentation to us. It was very enlightening, and we've got several citizens, and now it's, it's again on the YouTube for review so we can come back to it, but I think, uh, you guys did a very good job of putting the numbers together and presenting it, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
With that, I would look for a motion to, oh, sorry. The next item on the agenda is items from the public, and I have no speaker request forms. And as, as I said, we do have this, another item related to the jail on the agenda coming up. So with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Moved by Lassiter.
Second.
Subjected by Haggard, all in favor and to get by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.